All right, so being 7:30 and this meeting is start our CPC meeting which is being recorded. There are no minutes, they're not completed yet. So we're in Anthony Road is, we're going to continue that but has to wait till 8:00 PM. Danielle, you want to go through your administrative updates? You have any?
Yeah, I can. I was actually gonna record on the Zoom too.
Okay.
Record to the cloud. Okay, and I couldn't find it.
Recording in progress.
Okay.
Thank you, Ryan, I think is.
Oh, except now I have to turn this off. Okay. Okay, sure.
Jeremiah is there.
Okay.
Hi Jeremiah.
So.
Can we just, on one thing, do we just want to let anyone know about, I don't know how many people, if anyone is waiting on the Anthony Road?
Yeah, that's probably a good idea.
Yeah.
Just let them know that it's been, or will be.
So folks, if anybody is waiting about Anthony Road, that.
Hearing.
Hearing will be continued until April 4th, 2023. So in three weeks, two weeks? I think you told most people, right?
Sorry?
You told, you told.
Well, I think Debbie contacted a lot of people. I told the attorney who'd been in touch with us.
All right, so, okay. Miss, and Ryan's not in the waiting room?
Nope, I do not see Ryan in the waiting room yet.
Okay, all right, well.
Okay, so 97 Main Street has been on the market. I've been fielding some calls from developers and we understand there got a bidding process happening where numerous developers are submitting bids. I don't know what the result is of that yet. We were able to speak with people from the parent company from Stop &amp; Shop, Ahold, and they are happy to keep the lines of communication open about their plans and who they select to purchase and develop the property. As developers have been contacting me, I've been able to at least say, you know, here's a study that the Planning Commission did, and I've sent them the Abacus study that was done to, you know, as a demonstration of what the Planning Commission at least would like to see, and, you know, and then explaining that a development like that would take rezoning and, but that is an interesting development recently that I'll keep you posted as soon as I hear anything.
Did they have a date for submission for the?
It was March 14th, yeah.
14th?
Yeah.
Danielle, did they say if anybody, you know, they don't have to give names, but did they say in numbers or did anyone?
They didn't. I mean, I probably heard from eight to 10 developers, maybe about eight developers. So I don't know how many actually entered, ended up submitting proposals to them. So, but I'll let you know as soon as I hear of anything at all to do with that. I think it, you know, it's likely they may choose a project that would require zoning change. Most people seem to be interested in something that includes at least a component of residential. So I'll keep you posted on that.
And it is unrelated, but in the same kind of parcel, part of the Abacus plan is Pupigino's, what's the disposition of Pupigino's? Didn't they, they've ceased operations there, right?
Right.
So is that, have you heard, like, is that up for sale or is there anything going on?
I haven't heard of it being on the market at this time. I do know that people from Stop &amp; Shop are going to be reaching out to Mr. Luci, and I think they already did have a conversation. I don't know, and I believe Stop &amp; Shop is also reaching out to other property owners in that area to speak with them in case they could acquire additional property.
Did you say that Stop &amp; Shop has somebody interested or are they?
No, they're, they're looking for a buyer. And they, they may have selected someone by now, but we don't know yet who that is.
Well, I, I think it's, I mean, it's incredible that the two pieces of property that we needed to get disposed of so that we could actually do that whole project we talked about are now on the market.
Yeah, it's amazing, isn't it?
It's all white, you know, because we should have just gone with it, you know?
Yeah, it's crazy.
You know, we were ahead of our time, that's all.
Yep, yep.
Hopefully something good will come of it, you know, will be interesting and.
At least in retrospect, people say that the planning board did have, did try to put together a plan in anticipation of these things happening.
Yep.
And that, you know, maybe we needed a little more support.
Okay.
Anything else, Danielle?
Yeah, I've submitted a couple of warrant articles, which if you don't want me to submit either of them, just let me know and I'll pull them. But I did submit it because the deadline's passed. And one of them was to request funds for completion of the ADA plan. We had received a grant two years ago to do the first portion of the ADA plan. The funds we had at the time didn't cover anything more than town facilities minus the schools, but we are, we asked for the grant again this year to finish that plan. We didn't, we were not funded. So after some discussion with the town administrator, we had decided to put in a request warrant article to request the money to complete that plan. So.
Just the plan, meaning a proposed?
It's a self-evaluation and transition plan.
So you want the town meeting to give us money for the plan as opposed to getting the grant?
Right, because we didn't get the grant.
You didn't get the grant.
Right. We got, we got the, we got the grant to fund the first part of it, but we didn't get the grant to fund the rest, so. The other article that I submitted was $25,000 for consultant assistance in case we need it for MBTA communities. Initially, I had put that in our budget, but after meeting the finance director and town administrator, it was decided that that didn't really belong in the budget. So we agreed to put it in as a warrant article instead. I don't know if we're going to need that money or not. It's something that, you know, there's a lot of technical assistance that's available from the state. We just don't know if the kind of assistance that's being offered will be suitable for what, for what we need. So thought that we would at least keep our options open with having our own money to pay consultant if we needed to.
Right.
The, let me see, what else do we have here? Oh, I'm, I've been getting Norse under contract to do those wetlands delineations that were funded at the town meeting last year.
Who, I'm sorry?
Norse Environmental.
Norse?
Mm-hmm. So they're going to be doing the flagging, and then I've spoken with Luke Roy about taking their information and putting it onto a surveyed plan, and then hoping to have that done by the summer, and we could start making some decisions about whether it makes sense to have this shown on an A&R plan as reserving some of those parcels to the town as conservation land and then showing where the developable areas will be. So I tried to get someone under contract in the fall, but everyone was too busy. So Norse is going to be able to do it for us this spring, which is great.
Steve Erickson, does a lot of work in this town, so he knows it.
Well, that's good.
Yeah. Yeah, it was a good reason to choose them.
Yeah, spring is also, this spring will be good because last fall was dry.
Yeah, it's not dry this year.
And I'm continuing to work with the GIS manager on our compliance model for MBTA communities. The model actually works, it just, there's, there's one figure that's not coming out, right? I, I think it's going to end up saying that we can use the area that we would like to use, but I, we, we're working out some kinks. It's a little complicated and the amount of information that needs to be input. And so I'm working with Mike, the our GIS guy, he's been great, and we'll, we'll continue working through this and keep you posted on that too.
Oh, that's good.
So, and that is all I have.
That's all you got?
Yep.
All right.
We have a ZVA.
Yeah, we do have a ZVA.
Oh, Ryan's here. Let him in. Okay.
I read through the ZVA and I'm not, I'm a little confused by it.
I think I have the same opinion.
Yeah.
I trust Jerry.
So Ryan, Ryan, do you?
He's reading it.
Hang on a second, guys. Ryan, do you have your hand up?
No, oh, it's just the cursor.
Oh, it is?
Oh, it's the cursor on this computer.
All right.
Yeah, it looks like he has his hand up, but.
Ah, that's better. Hi Ryan.
I think he's still connecting.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, he is connecting. Can hardly read it, it's too far away.
And so anyway.
All right, I'm sorry.
I do, I do know that you're allowed to cross a zoning line, you know, like up to 30 feet and, you know, and carry that zone in. But I do understand Jerry's point about the RA zone ruling because it's a more restrictive zone. What I don't understand is since that, he wants to extend the, the housing into the commercial zone, so he is going to have to go with the RA specifications, and he wants to put a house there. So what's, what's the, what's not right? What doesn't he like?
I think it's the interpretation of the zoning where the zoning says that you can go 30 feet from the less restrictive, sorry, you can go from the less restrictive zone into the more restrictive zone, but it doesn't say you can do it in the reverse. So he considers RA to be.
It's just the larger portion overrules, you know, that's, that's what rules the zoning is a larger portion of land, and the large portion of land, I think, is.
I don't, actually, no, I don't think it's the amount of land, it's the fact that RA is more restrictive and HB is less restrictive. And the zoning says you can go 30 feet from the, from the less restrictive zone into the more restrictive zone. It doesn't say you can go 30 feet from the less, from the more restrictive zone into the less restrictive.
And that's what he's, that's what he's, yeah.
Yeah, and then the, and the one that threw me off too is the fact that the line, the law was established a while ago, and then 70 whatever, it, it got converted into the business, business district or that zone that carved across the lot. So, yeah, how did that happen?
There was a.
78, I think, I think he said 73, but I think it's 78.
78.
That was actually.
There was a, there was a rezoning committee that the select.
I was on.
You were on that, weren't you?
Yeah.
To put 100 feet.
We tried to uniform.
Is that kind of?
Uniform depth outside the road.
We tried to create a uniform depth zoning all along 28 to encourage the growth of the, of the commercial community, which, you know, didn't really.
Right.
You know, you know.
And it's being chipped away.
We ended up not making as many changes as we wanted to, and if, and the results were minimal investment.
Yeah, and now we're chipping away at it.
Yeah. Well then, well then we start, well, we were chipping away at it for a while when we put those, those affordable housing up the end on the north end of 28 and, you know.
Up a Pluff Ave.
Yeah, Pluff Ave, we can just kind of, because that was a real deep, it was deep up there, so there was a lot of possibilities right there.
Yeah.
But once we put that road in, we took the, it wasn't just, it wasn't just the taking of the land, it was the, it was creating a residential zone that decreased the size of the commercial zone to the point where it didn't have the value that it would have had as a wide open piece, you know? There was an upgrade to put another Stop &amp; Shop there. So, but once we've got to keep that land up, that was it, so.
That was important.
When's the ZVA meeting?
That meeting is.
Was that 13?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you, no, I appreciate that. I didn't have.
Sorry, Phil, we don't mind, we don't mind your input. You know those dates.
Yeah, we canceled this, I, and then, when it's 13.
Yeah, I saw that on my notes.
Sorry.
But so anyway, it seems to me that, I understand, well, I understand why, why he said what he said, but I just, I just, I do wonder that it would be okay to, to move the commercials on into the neighborhood as opposed to moving the neighborhood into the commercials on.
I know, if you try to.
Because it's, it's surrounded by residential, that lot, residential on all sides.
So that should maybe be taken into consideration.
Well, you know.
Or maybe that's why the Board of Appeals will get an opportunity to apply on.
They can, you know, I just, what we normally do in these situations when it's coming through the, from the appealing, the decision from the, from the building inspector, is we usually, we usually side with the building inspector.
Right.
You know, and he's correct. From what, from what he's talking about, you can go one way, but you can't go the other way.
Jerry's doing the right thing, right? You know, he's, he's going, he's interpreting it the correct way.
He's interpreting it the way it's written.
It's a different body.
Exactly, and there's somebody else that has to overrule that.
Right, and he respects that, and I think that's really good because it is just, that's the step, you know, if this doesn't comply.
I, I just.
It shouldn't be an exceeding cases where the building inspector uses almost too much discretion with those gray areas, and they can put themselves into trouble doing that versus just going black and white. There is a board or group.
Here's my decision, you can appeal it if you'd like to.
And if it makes, if it makes sense, like Warren said, I would, I would imagine they have a pretty good case and the ZVA would take that.
And I would also imagine that he would not be, I mean, if he listens to us and says, well, you know, you know, like I said, it would make sense to let it be. So if the, if the Board of Appeals were to give them the, the variance to do that, he probably wouldn't be upset, you know what I mean? But he does have to stick to the rules.
He has to stick to the rules, and that's what we have to kind of look at too.
Yep, and that's.
We have to look at the rules.
Be our mom, I guess.
You know? Let me, let me talk to the other two members on Zoom. Ryan, do you have any thoughts on this?
Yeah, can you hear me, Chris?
We can hear you.
Hey, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I agree with Jerry making the correct interpretation here. My only comment would be it seems odd that the business district was bifurcating an existing residential lot. So, I mean, in my mind, I tend to be in favor of the variance here to, to favor the applicant looking to build a home in that highway from that business district, considering. Unless I'm missing something, it doesn't seem to make any sense that part of a residential lot is in that business zoning area.
Yeah.
So what else could you do with it, I guess?
Right.
Why would it be there?
Not much. The other, I think the other lots are grandfathered though, right?
Well, I, I mean.
Around them.
I also think, you know, when you look at the plan, I don't think, I think that he's working where he has to work, because there's wetlands and there's setbacks and this thing. So he doesn't have that big of, Angelo's the one that put that, that building.
In the wetlands.
China cuisine, which is basically in the wetlands, which, which we've done with permission, you know, override.
From the state.
From the state, right? So, you know, you know, he's, he knows his business.
Yeah, there's, yeah, there's no, there's no toilets in that building.
Yeah, there's, there's a compost control.
Yeah.
Yeah. Which is a, you know, which is legitimate.
Yeah.
Legitimate thing.
But he also, you know, won't go there.
Yeah, so I think probably.
I don't want to be there. I think I'll just put a $1,000 bridge in.
Yeah. I think probably the best thing is for us to be is to support the building inspector.
Yes.
And I think the building inspector and us have some kind of anticipation that the Board of Appeals may look at this in a more favorable.
Right. Let me, let me see what Jeremiah has to say. Jeremiah, any thoughts?
Yes, yeah. Uh, yeah, looking through the materials, you know, I think everything's gone in its due course appropriately, but I do think that an exception is acceptable in this situation, so.
If you'd like, I can submit a comment that words it essentially that way, where you could say that the CPC agrees that the building inspector made the correct interpretation, but would not object to the Board of Appeals allowing this to be used in that way. Did you want me to say that or?
No.
No?
I just support the building.
Just support the building inspector?
I just say support the building inspector.
Okay. Bye.
Make it, make it very.
Yeah, yeah, because we're not really, you know, we're not really in a position to make that, that's why we have a void of fields.
Okay.
Right.
So we shouldn't, we shouldn't.
There's a separate board to do that.
Yeah, we should try to do that, so. And again, we know Jerry's done the right thing, so we'll support the building inspector and then leave it at that.
Got it.
Is that all right with you, Jeremiah?
Yep.
How about you, Ryan?
I'm in agreement.
Thank you. All right, so that's done. All right, I guess we can go to the ADU. We still have 12 minutes, and we could either postpone the, the talk or we can, excuse me, do the, the other after we finish with the ADUs, so.
Oh, the continuation?
The continuance, yeah.
Yeah.
Since we're, that's all we're going to do with them, just going to continue.
So what are we trying to do with the ADU tonight? Just, I, I read through the, the draft, the final draft down the bottom there, I guess. That's the final draft?
Well, it wouldn't go to final yet. So I had put together a draft based on the feedback that we had the last time that we met about this, and then I know that David still had some comments that he'd like, wanted to make, so sent them along to me and Jerry. I made some additional comments, had Jerry take a look at it, and I, I, so I've just provided the previous draft and the newest draft, which we just kind of put in there today, but it's still a tracked changes draft, it's not final, so that, that language is still to be discussed because it hasn't been viewed here yet or talked about, so.
Right.
I think that the, I think that the final draft is sufficient for us to get started because, because my, my, my guess is that we're going to give this to, we're going to, we're going to put this together, we're going to try to get it by town meeting and give it to Jerry to work with, and then we're going to see how it works. It's sort of like we got to take it for a test drive. If we don't take this for a test drive and then find out what the problems are, we won't be able to keep second, we'll keep second guessing it.
Right.
But where does it go from here once we?
If we approve it, then we have to.
Goes to a public hearing.
Yeah.
So just one, a public hearing or a county?
No, no, public hearing and before it goes to town meeting.
Yeah, public hearing first, yeah, and then we'll do a public hearing probably.
And then you change the draft, is that a public hearing?
We could.
We could, yes.
Yeah.
Or we could leave the draft alone and submit as is.
But I, I would imagine that a lot of the comments on the public hearing would echo the comments that we've made, you know, and the ones that we've kind of thought about making it, we've made it fairly restrictive, okay? And I think that people who might want it to be less restrictive, but I don't think we're in a place to do that. I think that the, that what we have now is a workable, a workable bylaw, and if we can get that on the books and then, like I said, take it for a test drive, and we could always make changes if we need to.
Yeah, I think the, the stuff that I pointed out yesterday to Jerry and Danielle was more conflicting language, kind of confusing, conflicting in the red here, so I figured you could, we could talk about that today if you wanted to talk about that.
Well, if it's.
We can, we can talk about.
It doesn't really, it doesn't affect the meat of the situation as near as I can tell.
Right.
So.
Yeah, the meat's like the first two pages.
Yeah, but I think what I would recommend for number two, Danielle and the others to take a look at, they just, there's all these nice concise bulleted items, and then you get to this giant blob, and it's.
Oh, A?
Yeah, two. It just has, it's four, it just has a.
Now, which one are you, are you looking at?
In red, everything kind of in red.
Yeah, but which one? Because I got a 188 one and a 192 one.
Oh.
You looking at?
The 3923, the, the.
Is it, you haven't, you haven't highlighted or is it not? Because I, I'm, I got my printout, that's right, so I apologize if you guys don't have it.
So we have it in, in the share file, it's under, it's called, it's track changes, draft bylaw CPC update 3923.
Right, that's what I'm looking at.
And then make sure you're, oh no, it's just a PDF, so you don't have to put on anything.
You don't have to turn things up.
Go down to page.
Well, wait a minute, is it the 192 kilobyte one?
Uh, it is.
It is, okay, that's the one that I went through.
Well, again, I just, I have a printout, but I'll just, if you give out, it's page two.
All right, hang on.
It's under number four, which is section four, using dimensional regulations. We don't have any.
Section.
Fun one?
Okay, okay, you, okay, I got it.
You got it, and then go down to.
The red stuff.
Go down to number two, and that's the one.
Yeah.
Again, either A needs to be trimmed down to the B, C, D, other, you know, like, it just seems like there's a lot of subjects in here that are all just jammed in together, whereas when you go to B or C, they're very specific and concise. So we could do ourselves a favor in the residence by just being a little bit more clear.
What if we do this? What if we take that A bullet and we have subbullets because it's all under the category of it, of the unit being a complete separate unit, but not detached? So if I could give it, so say we just start the first sentence, the unit will be a complete separate housekeeping unit containing both kitchen and bath within the existing house. And then just do bullets, because each of these is a point, and they're all related, and they're all more related to each other than they are to the, to B, C, D, or E. Do you know what I'm saying? I mean, would that be acceptable to do it like, like that?
If it's, if it, you know.
You can't miss anything in these bylaws, that's the whole trick.
If it just pleases the group, I mean, I would just use the first, first one in, in parentheses, so second, call it first, first sentence.
Okay.
First parentheses. Additions are possible, but the unit still has to be within the house. And then within the house, you have, of course, means either, you know.
It's, it's.
And then if you go down to the red, you've got, I mean, existing accessory structures such as detest grounds may not be converted into ADUs, but yep, they can, you know, it doesn't say that, because you just add a breezeway to them, so it just seems like this is.
No, 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 you can't add a breezeway, that's the trick.
A four-sided or call it two-sided because you're connecting laws, but we have shared wall is one of the requirements right here, it says, or that it shares a complete and common wall within the main house. And then you go further down and it gets into the breezeway thing where you'd have to have a connector. Well, it's not a really a common wall just having a connector, you know what I mean? And I get it, the connector has.
So I understand what you're saying, David. The problem is, there are people out there. If you don't specify all these things.
Yeah, I just think.
They're going to come back and say, no, that doesn't, you don't say that in here, I can do it.
I, I.
That's, it's kind of like, it's.
I'm all for, I'm all for more, I'm just saying, I think it needs to be better.
Well, I think that's what Danielle wants to do. She wants to take that and, and take it and make it to A and then subbullets under to A, because A is basically a category.
Yeah.
And then she's going to specify all those things.
I, I can try it that way?
Sure, sure, you know, short, you know, not too wordy.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of the bylaws that we have right now started out this way, and then we modified them as we ran into issues, or when somebody did something we hadn't anticipated, we had to correct it.
Right.
I mean, storage hardware, storage buildings out on Main Street's a good example.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, that, those are the, you know, so, I mean, I think that the condition that this is in right now is, is ready to take it for a test drive. Now, I'm against.
I disagree, but, you know.
We still, so there's still some time, because we're not going to put this for public, to a public hearing until after June.
I would suggest public hearing would happen after this June town meeting, where people I would suggest a public hearing would happen after this June town meeting where people will be confused, thinking it's gonna be on the warrant and it's not for June.
So we have some time still. That, you know, and so let's, let's, this is, you have this issue with this part, that's fine. So let's see if we can't make it more palatable.
What else, what else did you want to add?
Is there?
I've given it all to Danielle, I'm not gonna go over. If it doesn't get put in here, uh, you know, I'm not, I'm not the one here doing the horse's work or to get this thing cleaned out, you know? I can give my suggestions and have done that, so. At least I'm trying, you know?
No, you are, and that's fine.
And it, and it comes from a person that doesn't really believe in this bylaw. You know, I don't think the positives outweigh the potential negatives, I've made it very clear.
Yeah.
I don't think that the select board members position that this is how you keep elders in North Reading is, this is not the magic pill. It, it, it provides something, but the, the high taxes are how, is the problem with keeping elders in here. It's not an, it's not an ADU. And if the bylaw is not allowing you rent, then it's really not a moneymaker, so you can't say it's gonna lower, you know, the rent or the, you know, it's not gonna change the financial position of the elder. So that's the part that if we're hanging our hat on that, I don't find that to be the best argument. And from what we're seeing from assessors or whatever, there's not huge benefit to the town either. There's not gonna be a discernible increase in tax that is gonna be taken in from, from these ADUs.
Yeah.
So if you, you know, if mom lives in a home and she wants to bring her, allow her adult children or adult children with, with kids to live with her, so they, they set up an ADU and then that scenario that happens, well, that's more kids into the school system, not really any more taxes added. And I, so I don't get that one, you know what I mean? There's just, if you work out, say, call it the ten different scenarios, a new home, you're gonna see almost every new construction with all these McMansions, because every house is a McMansion in this town, is gonna have an ADU built into it.
Like they already do, you know, and right, and they all get two front doors.
But the point is, again, where, how's that helping, how's that helping necessarily the towns?
If I, if I may, you know, you're absolutely correct in most, everything you said there, so, so, and it was proven in California when they tried to do that mini-house thing, that it just didn't work, it didn't work. You know, trying to create housing that way by building these small, small add-ons that were similar to ADUs, they didn't call it that. Well, I guess maybe they did actually, but they, uh, it still worked, it didn't, it didn't provide the housing that they looked for and it was not financially rewarding to even the people that did it. So, so I think, so my, the point that I made on it right along is that I'm more, far more interested in whatever gets done being done according to code, so that you don't have fires and you don't have collapses and you don't have things like that and you can, and you can tell the fire department, yeah, there's an ADU in this, that means there's gonna be seven people living there, not three. So look for them, you know?
So it's a, for you, it's public safety.
Yes, it's, I've said this three or four times, so it's always been that.
And I get that, but it's, the analogy with the public safety thing, which is valid, don't get me wrong, is kind of like the same, not the same, but it's, it's similar to the argument that we need to give undocumented persons licenses in, you know, in the state which the state voted for. And then, and the argument there was so that we would know who's on the road and we can, again, bring them into the public safety. And if you buy that argument, it's great, but you're basically kind of, you're justifying the kind of illegal behavior because, again, so to give. You're giving people that don't really deserve them the right.
Well, if I can just finish the other half of it, the other half of it is that after talking to Jerry at late, he's like, they're already doing it. And he said, I can't really stop it, so.
Again, and, and, and again, undocumented persons are driving, so it's, it's the same kind of argument, but like, can't beat 'em, join 'em, you know what I mean, kind of thing, and I get that, so we're, we have that attitude, can't beat 'em, join 'em. But at the same rate, you know, I just don't, I look at just the benefit to the town, that's all I'm saying, I try to look at both sides. To the person that's next door, to the house that gets the front yard completely asphalted so they can fit the ten cars and everything. Is that a great way to, you know, is that the way you want the abiding house to you to look? And it's coming if you do ADUs. It might not be your house, you might have the bigger lot, whatever, you can kind of hide the ADU better. But if it's a lot for everybody and it should be, you know, it's coming, you know?
Well, I just wanted to understand that, I don't, that they, that the points you're making are valid, okay? But there's, but there's another side to it, you know?
I get that.
If they're already doing it and everything, and then, then, then trying to make it, make it legal and inspected so that we, we know it, so that we have some control over what's going on, is, is my goal, that would be, that was my goal, it has been right along, I've said this.
Yeah.
But it does, it get, you incentivize, he gets exactly what you want. So with new construction, it's gonna be not only happening and be built into every, because the builders will seize on this like no one else, more than an elder will. Elder doesn't have the twenty grand to spend to build the ADU. But this is gonna be all about builders and new homes and then it can be advertised on the MLS and you get the ADU and now it's, it's all legal, so you can hear more about it. And essentially we'll become two families in these bigger homes. And again.
If it isn't already.
If it isn't already, but again, that kind of like can't beat 'em, join 'em is, I'm not, I'm not necessarily on.
Well, that wasn't, that wasn't my words, that was the building factor.
No, again, it's, no, and he's what we're up against. Yeah, I've talked to Jerry enough, like you guys have, and I, I do respect the challenge that he has, but that's just why I'm hesitant on it, because it doesn't give us any credits with affordable housing, it doesn't like do a lot of the things that, I don't know if the taxpayers are really aware of it, you know? It doesn't do all the things that people think it does.
Well, the question is how many more of them will you get other than what you already have?
You get a lot more.
You think so?
I do, especially again with new construction, it's, it's, it's helping out the haves, not the have-nots.
I, you know, I messed around in the, in the business for a while and I saw a lot of brand new houses, I worked there, where a lot of brand new houses being built now. They had these, these separate, they all, you know, and then I do a lot of inspections and everything. It's very rare that I don't go in the basement of one of those bigger houses and find a blue apartment for grandma downstairs, I mean, it's just how it is, so.
Hey, if it's for grandma, I'm all for it, but I'm just saying.
I'm wondering, well, a lot of times it is, a lot of times it is, and so I, I, and, and nobody told them they had to do it, but they did it for the right reason. For a family, so I think there's more of that out there than you think.
Let's, let's, uh, see what Leanne has to say.
Thank you. I'm glad this conversation's happening. I tend to be leaning more, more, more with you, David. Um, I would just would like you, for my own benefit and maybe for people listening, if there's anyone out there, to clarify the difference to me between an in-law apartment, which, I'm pretty sure I have a legal in-law apartment that my in-laws live in. Um, you know, when it was inspected and it was, I mean, maybe it's not, I don't know, but they live there. And they're registered voters, so it's, that's where they live.
Yeah.
Are there two kitchens or one kitchen?
They have a kitchen.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's not.
Yeah, so I, I mean, this, you know, what you have is very common, is, is, you know, and that's what Jerry was telling me, he says, it's just, it's just being done, so it's not uncommon. Even the brand new houses, I mean, again.
We were told as long as it was family.
Well, no, there, there was no, at the time, there was no rule saying that you could do it, people just did it.
Yeah.
But the problem is there are state laws, what Jerry explained to me is there are state laws. And the state laws allow you, allow somebody to do this and do everything except I think a stove. As soon as they put a stove in, it becomes a separate, a separate unit or, you know, you know, or, or, or a door that you can't go through or something, so. So, uh, so they would show the plans and they'd build a house that way and then they'd fix it after with the last couple of things that needed to be done. It took no time to make them into a, an in-law. But again, you're, and just like the people, most of the people I've seen, you're using it for the reason that we would like the ADUs for. So, um, that's why, that, I just wanted to, I just, and in, in your case, if it was built while the house is being built.
Right.
Then it was inspected and everything is good, it's all good, so it's one that would probably just get a pass right on.
Right.
Right, oh, yeah.
Done right, and that's what Jerry was saying, so that's why I, 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 um.
Yes, the stove and a locked door in between the two units.
Yeah. So I, that's why I think that if, if we can get something at least reasonably basic, so that we can encourage the, the proper construction and proper inspection of these. And then, and then another thing is to make sure like the septic systems are, are properly designed, you know, things like that, so.
We have two other members, so. Who would like to go first? Ryan or? Might as well get Ryan. Ryan, you have any comments?
No, I mean, I, you know, without wasting everyone's time, I'm, I'm, I think Dave Rudolph and I see this pretty similarly. Um, I understand the situation I put Jerry in, but I have my reservations about what we're gonna, what, what this bylaw is gonna create in terms of, uh, as Dave mentioned, you know, builders and people doing this, and I don't really see the, I guess I just still don't see really the benefit, but, um, I, I don't think, I don't think I have anything new to add to that, so.
Okay. Jeremiah?
Um, yeah, I mean, I, I think I've been pretty clear on the record on this, uh, that I'm actually probably one of the, probably the only one of the group who's actually pro-ADU and view that as a potential positive for, uh, the greater community. I, I'm still, you know, from opposite perspective of Dave, I'm questioning the purpose of all of this. Um, I'm still curious as to why we can't just close loopholes on the existing rules, um, rather than create, you know, what's, you know, ostensibly a shell of a policy. I mean, it's so restrictive and to such a narrow class of people who could actually take advantage of it, um, that I don't, I, I don't know that it's gonna move the needle. It also creates administrative burdens of how are we gonna, you know, like we discussed last time, how are we gonna manage like these annual acquisitions of people in terms of how, you know, who's living there and owning it and everything. You know, so, I mean, I, I, I'm inclined to be supportive of the policy if it gets the idea of ADUs into the community discussion and opens the door to people kind of viewing it as a less, you know, scary thing for their community. Um, I hear a lot of the talk, it sounds frankly a little protectionist, you know, like, you know, woe of my neighbors kind of thing. I don't view that way, I'm, I'm much more of a, you know, uh, I grew up in Utah, land of libertarianism, and then I might not qualify myself as a libertarian, but I do appreciate property ownership and the ability to, you know, take advantage of the very valuable land that you pay taxes on. And I'm, I'm disinclined to government overreach when it comes to asking for and getting approval from, you know, bodies like ours just to do a smell test, when we already have rules that are so restrictive, that if somebody meets these qualifications, what could their neighbor possibly complain about that's, you know, um, that should, that should get a, a body like ours to come in and suddenly be the arbiter of the neighbors? So the whole thing smells funny to me, I'm, I'm a little uncomfortable by it, but I defer to the experience of the board. I defer to, you know, the idea that this can kind of be presented to the community as a, as an opening to this topic so that we can get their feedback and how they view the, the community development. But yeah, I mean, the other thing, reading, uh, the draft, I thought that we had come to an agreement as a group, certainly not a majority, I, I know that Dave spoke on the topic, that, that if you met all the qualifications, that it would be a by right. And according to the, the red line, it's still, even if you met all, you know, the qualifications, you have to go to past us to get that approval. I thought we had an agreement, um, that that wasn't what we're gonna do. So I'm a little surprised to see that in there, and maybe I, I missed the meeting where, um, the majority was great otherwise, but, you know, I've got my concerns.
Okay, thank you.
I do, I do some.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask you, so Jeremiah, what existing, other than a one-sentence bylaw, um, two-hundred-sixty-three, what, what, how would you just make that better, um, without, you know, doing kind of what we've done? Like, how do you take one sentence and rewrite, quote, to quote you, the bylaw, the, uh, ADU bylaw?
Uh, I, you gotta clarify, I don't have a.
I'm just saying, I'll read it, I'll read it for you, because it's so short. "In residential, industrial, and business districts, the detached accessory structure should conform to the following provisions. It shall not occupy more than twenty-five percent of the required rear yard, it shall not be less than twenty feet from the front line street, uh, front line street, less than ten feet away from the lot line." So that's, that's, that's the ADU or accessory structure, and then there's basically no, there's no accessory dwelling, if you will, by law, because they're not a lot, you know? So I'm just saying, when your first comment was, I think we should just kind of modify the, the existing one, there isn't really one. That's why we're kind of starting this process now. There's people for it and against it, but I think we all have to agree, like, something's gotta be drafted, you know, and it can't just be making something that really doesn't exist better, because that's Jerry's problem, he doesn't have anything.
He's against the state law.
He, he, I was just gonna say, it's mass general law.
Yeah.
You know, and I think what Danielle's initial draft is, is what is kind of the mutually acceptable, um, call it baseline for towns adopting the ADU, that's what we started with, I think. And yeah, you know, we've taken the scalp, to it and butchered it a little bit, but, and maybe it's a little over-restrictive, um, but we're just starting this out and I'm, I'm in agreement with you, I'm not necessarily, I think this is a little over-restrictive. If you're just looking at it in a purely, if you're looking at it purely from that perspective, I think it is overly restrictive and having people do the notarized stuff and I live here and all this kind of stuff going on, that's, believe it or not, I'm more libertarian than you think and I, that, that does bother me, but I mean, towns have zoning bylaws for setbacks in areas and we're different maybe than Utah, I don't know, but you know, Massachusetts is historically pretty tight-lotted and so we maybe can't do the same things they can do out in big country, but, um, but there are, you know, there are zoning things that have been established and that's all we're trying to do, is kind of respect them before we change them. Because that's, people moved into this town with a, with a zoning bylaw that's been established. I mean, we don't even print them that much, this one's from like two thousand eighteen, the other one I have's from two thousand four, I think that's the diff, they don't change much.
They don't change that much.
You just get one there, yeah.
Yeah, well, the point is, you can't.
Yeah, we change them.
They're one, they're one thing and now we're gonna go change it, I just think, I do take that very seriously and I don't think, I don't, not saying, Jeremiah, that you don't, I know you do, and you're passionate about it and I really respect your position, but I just, I just, uh, I'm just more, I'm more cautious about it. I'm too, I think I'm too close to the building world to know, I see, I see it, I guess. Quote the movie, I see dead people, you know, that's.
Right, no, no, no.
People not see, I see the construction world, because I'm in the construction world.
David, your, your view of what we're looking at is good.
It's just one view.
The, the issue, part of what we've talked about at the beginning of this discussion was taking something and, well, we really don't need all that stuff. We don't need it for you, because you understand all those little things and your mind won't let something else get in there, because you learned all that stuff. It's the people who don't understand and they read this thing, oh, I can do this, but you really, you can't, so we need to. That's why, if you look at the beginning of this, this thing, there's, there's definitions, there's nine definitions in there, it's like, I read those things, it's like, oh, yeah, that, that makes total sense, I understand all that stuff. And it's, it's not, it's not for me, it's for the person who doesn't understand it, now they do understand it because it's written down.
If I, if I, if I may, the, the, um, when you get into, we've, we've kind of created this monster on our own by such restricted regulations on the building of the subdivision, that we run the cost of a lot up so high that they gotta build a, a huge house on it just to justify getting the money they get for the lot in the house. So I mean, that's the degree, it's a, yeah, we created this, so we created this problem.
Actually, we, we didn't create it, it was handed to us by other.
Well, yeah.
By other planners.
Yeah, we didn't, yeah, we didn't create this, this.
You, you and I have been here a long time, Warren, we didn't create it.
We didn't create it, right. However, however, once, you know, um, um, once that, once, once it's, that's how it is and that's, and we follow the subdivision control, our rules are there. So now we've, we've, there's a situation where the architects gotta design a house, you only need just so much living space. So he says, well, we'll just add an in-law on, you know, because now it makes the house bigger and it, and, 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 so Dave, so I, so your argument about more people will design, they're already doing it, I, I don't see that, I, I, I would be very surprised to see that there's an increase of any major percentage of people designing them on, on new construction than there already is.
Yeah, I don't think it's gonna change the construction.
Yeah, because I, I don't, I can't think of one that I've looked at in the last lord knows how many years that didn't have something like this on it, on new construction, on these lodge houses. So, so I'm, I'm not so sure that that's, you know, that's a, that's a, as big of a concern. You know, my concern is always is, and, and I'm, and I'm okay with that, because it means that it's on the original plans and it gets built right, it gets inspected, plumbing, wiring, everything is inspected, and so I'm, I'm fine with those, you know? And that's what Jerry says.
And that's valid, that's valid. I don't, I don't speak to that.
It's, it's the ones that go in those, those garages, after the fact.
The question is, how many people are gonna do that, really?
Well, no, I.
If we, if, if we put this, I think that, that, I, I think that the motivation to do this is not gonna be money.
No.
Because mostly if they bought a house that big, they probably don't need the money. My thing, my thing, the motivation is family, and I think that's what yours was, and I, and I can, and I can, I'm pretty sure that in most of the homes that I've been in that have these, it's family.
Yep.
So I don't, though that's what Reading did, I mean, I, I, I think that they, they didn't, they didn't, did they say family, they didn't say family, we just, we're the ones.
We used a model of a bylaw from a different community, but it wasn't Reading.
It wasn't Reading, yeah.
Well, you know, so we can require that, I mean, I guess, but I don't know that I think we need that requirement, I think it's family.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I, I agree, I don't, I don't see. I don't, I don't see the, the requirements that it's a healthcare worker, you know, or family, and I, I, I made it, I think I'm on record saying I, I don't find you'll be able to really enforce that anyways. And so I don't-
You might at the first, the first outset, but after that-
Most people that live in a house like that, where there hasn't room to do this, do not want a stranger living in the house with them.
The part, the part, the part you want in there is, which I think we have in there, if I'm wrong, is, is just the short-term rental and kind of the rental stuff-
Yeah, it's in there. No short-term rentals.
But you can't really restrict the people.
Yeah.
But you can't have it like this is advertised and you can find it on a short-
So do you want to take, you want to take family out of this?
It's not me, but I think, I think if you ask, oh, yeah, you're open to that. Because I'm, I'm saying, I'm open to that, I'm sure Jeremiah is open to that, and I don't, you can speak for Ryan, but to me, those aren't the issues as much as the who.
Yeah.
You know?
I think the percentage of people that would do something besides family is very small.
Yeah.
I'm kind of all about, if I have to be honest, my, my's all about the character of the neighborhood or the character of the, of the house. And that's why I pointed out, one of the items was, specifically, if anyone has it, is number seven in the, I guess it's just seven in the, in section four, um, which is prior to the issuance of permit, a floor plan must be submitted showing the proposed interior and exterior change to the building. So I just made the note that all applicable plans, and Jerry would know, but if you're modifying the exterior, it should, you should have to provide elevations. I would never make that a requirement if someone's just doing something inside, then I don't care.
The only thing-
But if you're modifying the look of the house, I, Jerry, we, if, if this body's the one approved, should know what it's going to look like.
Yeah, okay.
It's always my biggest complaint on the ZVA things-
No, no, I understand. And I think, I think the, the other reason they would, they would touch the outside of the house is to add another door, another entry door.
Right.
And, you know, and I think Jerry, at, at that, at that point, Jerry can ask them. That's, that's Jerry's right to ask them for an elevation of that, of that section.
Well, that's why I think just with the, just with the wording, just all applicable plan, you know, drawings, is the better way to do it because Jerry's going to be the one, because he's the official there. You'd say, yeah, that covers him when he says, I need an elevation, a plan, and he'll say, why? And he says, it says right here, all applicable, you're changing the outside of the house? I need an elevation.
Yeah. I, I do agree with that. So-
Out, out of curiosity, out of curiosity, forgive me.
Yeah, no, no.
So I understand a building inspector wanting to have an elevation, but I'm going to see what, what the building's going to be deprived of and everything. Dave, when you talk about like the, the nature of the neighborhood and everything, it, it's, uh, I mean, it seems like you're talking more aesthetic.
That's what I, that's what I mean.
Is, is it, is there anything, is there anything currently that, and again, forgive me being a new guy, if, if I didn't read the, the existing material close enough, is there anything that, that requires somebody building a new house to, you know, get permission on what their house is going to look like?
On building a new house?
So if I wanted to do more, if I wanted to do like, if I'm building a house and I want to do more modern kind of architecture, uh, do I need to get permission from the town in order to, you know, write off on the aesthetic amount?
No, but I think myself-
Because if not, if not, then why, why would, why would that extend to an ADU company?
Well, the developer, the developer of a, of a subdivision is going to have restrictions and requirements so that, so that all the houses look within a similar type of building so that it doesn't disturb the value of the rest of the subdivision. So he's going to have, uh-
No problem.
I think, I think I know where-
I, I know what he's asking.
Well, I know Jeremiah's, and, and Warren's right, there's different covenants and things like that that restrict for developments, but I'm, I'm referring to, when I say the aesthetic, I just mean, and I think it's in the language here, is it, it has to be in keeping with the architecture of the house. So you're right, you're, you've got a modern contemporary house, you're going to throw an addition on it. Where, what that, I think, I think what it's going for, and what it's-
It looks like something from spooky world.
You just didn't slap it on, I guess, is, is, you know, because you just were trying to create like a shack for somebody to live in, and most people are not going to do that, clearly not in this town, but I think that was the spirit of it, like, you've got to keep it, it got, it has to look kind of like your house, like the addition you're going to add or whatever. It's in keeping with the architecture. And Danielle, you can let me know, do we strike that? Is that in ours? But I remember reading it in some of the ones that we were looking at.
Which provision?
It's a provision that says the, the-
Yeah, it said this.
Yeah, it maintains the aesthetic of a single-family house.
You know which one it is? Can I can read it to you?
Sorry, the one that says that it maintains the aesthetic of a single-family house? Is that, is that what you're talking about?
And I think that makes sense if we're trying, if the goal is to avoid the appearance of two different structures. You know, and it seems like that, that is the intent.
And that's what I meant, that's what I meant by keeping the, and I mean, I, I think it's that, and then Ryan's expressed this before, and we're both kind of lament that you see the houses that, and again, they have every right to do it, but it doesn't mean it's a great thing, is when they pave their entire front yard, you know, and make it a parking lot. And you see that all the time on the smaller lots in town, which again, God bless them, they have every right to do an ADU if they comply, but it's, it just is kind of sad when you drive down a street that used to have the little driveway, couple house, cars, and everybody keeps telling us we're doing less cars now, but you drive down some of these streets, it's not a couple cars.
No, it's those high school students.
Multiple cars, and like, and they're in, all in the front yard and everything, and it just, it does take away from the look of the neighborhood.
So Dave, what it says is prior to issuance of the special permit, the CPC shall make the finding that the aesthetic of a single-family home is maintained.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's what I, I remember reading it. But I'm, I'm in agreement with you, Jeremiah, you can't tell somebody how to kind of design your house.
No, that does seem fair. I mean, I think, I mean, I, I should also like frame a little bit of my feedback in the sense that I'm not worried about my neighborhood. You know, I'm, I'm thinking more of the smaller lot parts of our community where, you know, the cost of living is getting high, you know, the tax, the, you know, your annual taxes are high, and you have really squeezed families. And if they have just enough space to be able to monetize some of their real estate, um, I, I'm, I'm really disinclined to say no to them. Because in my neighborhood, people aren't going to do that because it's a, it's a kind of a, a mutual understanding of, you know, one-acre family houses of, you know, we're not going to do that, that kind of stuff. But we're talking to the smaller lots, you know, I, I, I have a real hard time telling them no, that they can't take advantage of the property that they own, you know? And I appreciate their neighbor's perspectives, you know, but I, I, I think that if you look at those communities generally, would they rather have the, the power of a property owner or would they rather be paranoid of their neighbors? You know, I, I'm going to defer to, you know, the, you know, people's best intentions on that kind of stuff. So, you know, but you guys have way more experience when it comes to how this community, what their preferences are. And I'll, I'll go back to a great conversation I had with Warren when this toll pin came up, that the current way that we're approaching this is a way to kind of introduce the topic to the community.
Yeah.
And so for those purposes, I still stand by it. I still think this is such something we should put forward, but we should be very open ears to what kind of feedback, you know, the community gives on this.
Absolutely.
And, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, we got a couple changes we got tonight.
Yeah, so let me just summarize what I have so far. For number two, bullet everything under that main heading so it's more concise, also probably cut fast a little bit on the wordiness so it's also more concise. Take out the requirement that it be a family member. Um, I think, and, and tell me if we decided against the special permit. I had thought that we decided to keep the special permit requirement, but if you want me to change that-
I'd say you keep it until you have the public meeting, and if it gets overwhelming, you know, you can always take it out.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, change the reference to, uh, floor plan to floor plan and elevation. I, I just, I know you mentioned that earlier, I was just trying to see what the actual change was. I don't know.
What it implies, unless you want to clarify if it's exterior, it needs elevation, but I would just say all applicable plans, and you could put parentheses-
Okay, yeah.
Um, plans, elevations as an example.
Right. But that's still going to be, it's still going to be-
Because I don't also want to put the burden on them-
In the building inspectors' purview too.
It will, but say they didn't talk to them and they take the expense or they're even drawing it themselves, because they're allowed to, of drawing an elevation when it's not needed. I don't want people to think they need an elevation if it's not needed, that's why just having it all applicable.
Yeah, they don't need one. If they're not changing the outside, I'll say they don't need one.
They'll ask the question, what do I need? And you'll say, you know what, you're just inside-
Well, unless it's one of those houses that already has two front doors, they're going to need to put a door on someplace.
Yeah, they have that door somewhere.
We tell them they want, and, and this, we tell them we want it on the side.
Side or the back.
Yeah, side of the back. So that-
That tells you, yeah, because you're altering, you're altering an elevation, so-
Yeah, so that's, you know, I want, the problem is alter the elevation very much, just putting a door, and to do, alter the look to some extent. But I mean, as long as you don't put a garage door on the side of the building, you know what I mean?
Right, right.
It's a regular, a regular person door.
And Danielle, did you, the, the other one that I think we could break, though, I, I agree with you on the two, just clarifying, but that bottom section that I brought to yours and Jerry's attention of the number two is kind of the, the setback requirements is kind of, I think needs to be on its own.
Uh, sorry, which, which, it's page two or-
Well, this isn't the, this isn't my writing, I mean-
No, this is my suggestion as to how to address your concern, but if, that's not what it does, it was changed in. So you're talking about page two, provision two?
Can you read it? Because I think I'm just, I'm-
Yeah, yeah, sure, okay.
Marked up one.
Um, so this is two A, um-
Just at the end, you know, the setback stuff.
Uh, okay. Um, let me see. So any new construction, that part?
Yes.
Okay. Any new construction done to create an ADU must comply fully with the setback requirements of the zoning district in which the property is located. Where an existing main house has legally non-conforming setbacks, an ADU may be allowed by special permit so long as there is no further encroachment on the setbacks of that zoning district. I, I don't know if that fully says what the concern was, but-
As I mentioned, it just misses existing, um, because you're, the only thing existing you mentioned is non-conforming, you know, legal non-conforming. I, my, my point was, and so you, you cover new construction, right?
Oh, but that last sentence, where an existing main house already is legally non-conforming, you can still get an ADU special permit as long as you don't make it more non-conforming, as long as there's no further encroachment into the setback. So that's what that means, but I don't know if that's not clear, I think it was changed.
So I think what, I'll try to explain to the board what my, my, and this, this I think Jerry and I agreed on when we were talking, because this is the one is, is, um, we, we joke, I call it like the drip-trip of permitting, where you first go in, and I'm going to make a garage, a detached garage, and since I'm allowed in the zoning, you know, regulations, I'm going to, I'm going to locate it 10 feet from the property line, you know, because I'm allowed.
Yep.
And then, but, you know, you get your permit from Jerry, and then, and you're allowed to, as, as Warren even points out, half of them, they do all the plumbing and everything like that, and then, but the goal is to convert it, you know, to make it an ADU. Now you've got an ADU, quote-unquote, a dwelling unit that's 10 feet from a property line, the same setback of a, um, of a, or a shed or garage, or, you know, an accessory structure. It's also, when it was built, is only going to be 20 feet, but now if you wanted to, you could go up to 35, you know? Because it's a dwelling now, so you don't have to keep to the 20 anymore. And again, I'll say it again, you're 10 feet from a person's property line. So all I'm getting at is, we need to have it say, if you have an existing structure that is non-conforming, I mean, if you have a, an accessory structure that you want to convert into an ADU and it's non-con, it's, it's into the setbacks of a dwelling, you can't make it a dwelling, you know? And again, you might have a special provision for that, but I don't think your language really covers that.
Yeah, I, I know what you're saying.
Can I maybe make a suggestion for how we might clarify that better? I just-
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, I mean, just like-
And I, and I asked Jerry actually if he could put it into a simpler way of saying it, and I don't know, again, if I'm, I'm being clear enough, but it's, it is mainly chiefly to avoid what typically happens, which is, and this is just on setbacks, is people build to an accessory, um, setback and then come back shortly thereafter and connect to the house or do other things, and then they, they're locked in, they've got their accessory structure that's only 10 feet from the lot line when they're supposed to be 25.
Okay, so what if we said, I'll add to the sentence a little bit, any new construction done to create an ADU must comply fully with the setback requirements of the zoning district in which the property is located for primary structures? Even in instances where an accessory structure becomes, never mind, I thought I had it and I don't.
I think she's on the right, she's on the right.
Yeah, what I provided to you, Jerry, is, um, you know, converting an accessory structure to a dwelling, you know, in converting it to an accessory structure, that the, the accessory structure must, um, conform to the dwelling, as a, as a dwelling, the accessory, the former accessory structure must conform to dwelling setback requirements, which have been established and in place for years, you know? But our, that, that's what I was getting at is, uh, you know?
Because it's now becoming a main structure.
Right.
Okay, I'll find a way to say that better. I know what you mean. It's not crystal clear. I'll find a way to say that better.
Yeah, and again, maybe-
That, well, that's, that's, that's an excellent point. You, you don't want to take something that's 10 feet off the lot line, that's supposed to be a garage, that you drive into, shut the door, you leave, and you go to your house, and make that a house 10 feet off the line. That's a whole different special permit you need.
Well, again, it goes back to, we have zoning bylaws for our purpose, we have setbacks for our purpose, so they're not made to be go-arounds that, so you can move your structure 15 feet closer to a property line, um-
Right.
As a, um, you know, as a way of getting around.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought you said it had to share a wall. Did I misunderstand?
Well, yeah, if, so if you take the garage, it was not attached-
Right.
And you actually make the building bigger to the garage. Not, not just a breezeway.
You connect the-
Oh, now it's-
Not just a breezeway, but a whole building.
I'm sorry, I didn't know.
And you're using this garage as your, oh, this is my, this is my line now. And, and I, I totally agree with what Dave's saying. That's, that's just not a good, not a good thing.
It's not a good precedent, because then you're basically essentially changing the set, your side yard setbacks.
Yeah, side yard setbacks.
So if we're going to do that, let's do it up front and not in a sneaky way. Let's change side yard setbacks and have the town vote on it.
Yeah.
But I mean, to have, to have this kind of bill, it's, it's really a builders' go-around, I'm sorry to say.
Yeah.
I don't mean to be down on builders, but they're going to seize on every, every single word of this, of this bylaw.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Anything else?
No, that was it. Who says that section in that one line, number seven?
Jeremiah? Ryan, I can't see you, so I have to ask you. Anything else for you? Because Danielle's going to make some, uh, some changes to this, and when she does, she'll get it out to us.
Yeah, I agree with the changes.
Okay, and then we'll, we'll look at it again. And, uh, once again, if, when we, the next, our next step, once we finalize this at the board level, we have to take it to a public hearing, and that won't happen until after June's town meeting, because we don't want it, we don't want to confuse anybody about what's on the, the-
Warrant.
The warrant for this June town meeting. Thank you. All right? So being-
Do you want me to do a motion?
Well, Ryan, do you have the motions?
I got one too, if you want to. You're going to read in front of me. It helps, Ryan.
I do.
Would you please read that motion for-
Continue.
The continuance there?
Grandly.
Go ahead.
Yes. Mr. Chairman, I move to the committee and commission vote to continue the public hearing for 17 Anthony Road and 346 R. Hayville Street until Tuesday, April 4th, 2023, at 8:00 P. M.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second by Mr. Pierce. Is there any discussion? And this will be a roll call vote because there are two people on Zoom. All those in favor, please say aye. Mr. Pierce?
Aye.
Mr. Dave? Mr. Dave, sorry.
Aye.
Mr. Johnston?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
And Mr. Hayden, aye. Is there anything else? So, being nothing else, thank you for coming.
Thank you for the call.
We will adjourn this meeting until-
April 4th.
Fourth, at 7:30. That's our next meeting, gentlemen. See you then.